We got, we got some water entry coming in on that. I tore all of the sheet rock, the insulation, everything out of there because we were already getting, you know, mold showing up. So I wanted to get rid of all of that. So I tore all of that out on my own to get rid of it. So we can get rid of that.
Okay.
Anywhere already. We have, we've got way too much water.
Yeah, and I noticed on the vents that, that water, yeah, yeah, we need to pick those up as well.
It is, it is a basement and not, not across, but it has a, has a poured, uh, finish on the floor.
It's a modern building that's got a poured floor in there. This, the water's coming through the actual wall instead.
What's the pleasure, the pleasure of the board on it as far as this? And we'll get into the, into the discussion again.
Well, before we make it in motion, Mr. Chairman, can we just ask a few questions? So you want to withdraw them? Because there are some concerns. One is, uh, what is the guarantee here? Is there a guarantee?
On most of that right there, without going around the whole building and doing everything, the guarantee's gonna be pretty limited. I mean, you could go around and do the whole building, you know, from what I did with those guys, you know, they gave the best they could. The guarantee is you would have to go around and completely do that whole building. And you're talking about a lot of money. We're just talking about the front wall, the back wall, where the water's, I see where it's actually coming in. And then you've got build-offs on the side of the basement that really, I don't think the water's coming in there.
Uh-huh. But my point is, is this GRS services, I don't see whether they're providing any, any guarantee or warranty on this.
Well, I think what he's saying, he'll guarantee what he does if his water's coming in from a different area, which I think is just on the front and the back. And, you know, I'm not an expert on, you know, for water entry, but it's pretty much know you want to attack it from the outside.
But, but my point is, he hadn't determined where the water's seeping here, right?
Well, we can see it, yes.
You can't, I mean, but where it's coming in? At what point?
Yeah, it's all through there.
Okay. All I'm saying is, uh, you know, I believe in warranties and bonds. If you ain't bonded on food, which, and, uh, we did the work on the courthouse. We stopped the leak on it. We did it. We determined where the water was coming in. We stopped it and sealed it up. But I'm just getting the point that.
Well, that's where it's gonna put the swell on that north side to try to divert that water from coming in there, put the pressure in the grounds to seep it through. And then it's gonna divert all the, um, the downspouts in the back out to the road. And then it's gonna dig out and it's gonna, you know, like I say, patch the walls from the outside and then put two coats of waterproofing material on there.
Okay.
And we're gonna have pumps out there to pump that water, but you're only gonna use it when it's raining. And it's not like it's a ton of water coming in there, but over a few days, you got the whole floor on one side with a whole water up to about an inch, inch and a half.
When you said back, when you're talking about the back, you're talking about the eighty-three side?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then we, I showed you where the water was coming in under the door.
That's, that's right.
That we stopped that, you know. I'm, I'm just concerned about it, uh, to, to, to go this whole route.
Well, I think the water problem should have been fixed before we did anything to it. Either that or do like the Board of Education, let's condemn that building and demolish it if we can't fix it.
That's what you want when you come in on the end, give back the money.
It is. I, I know this is a problem we need to have addressed, and I'm just gonna bring it to you. Y'all, y'all can decide how you want to do with this.
Right. Well, if it's still leaking water down there, why are we fixing upstairs?
Well, this is something that, you know, I wasn't a part of at the beginning, but once I've come in, this is something we gotta address, I think, before we go any further.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no way to do it.
This is a federal grant that was obtained. Uh, we're in the final stages of our last extension. Um, I'd say ninety-eight percent of the work has been done. Um, this is an issue that, that needs to be addressed, and we've got to stop this water from coming in.
I agree. We got, we gotta stop the water. But, uh, I, over the years, I was under the impression this money going to this Hubbard thing was strictly government grant money until I found out here lately how much the county's putting into it also. And then, I know Larry, you tried to get Department Corrections come out there and help save money and do stuff, but then they sheetrock over the, the lights. I've got it taken down. They, they put a sheetrock down on the face of the walls or damp stuff like that. This stuff should have been done to start with. And we need this building fixed to fix right because we're gonna have to utilize this building to get some of these other departments located there.
I, I've, I've got a motion, I think.
Go ahead.
If it's okay. I, I don't like that we have three different scope of works on these, and the, and the variability on these estimates is too, is too great. I motion that we go back to these other two companies and get a very similar scope of work.
They won't do that kind of work.
Then we find, we need to find a company that will, because I, I just, I think at twenty-nine thousand dollars, that's enough that we need to, we need to have two or three, maybe four good, solid bids on apples to apples that we can look at.
But this is, this is doing the outside and inside.
All right, hold on a second. We've got a motion from a commissioner to, to rework this scope of work. Uh, we got a second from Commissioner Evans. Discussion.
Uh, the discussion is, is we're, we're still looking to attack this from the outside?
And inside.
Or the ins, well, you do one or the other.
Right.
I, I'll be honest with you. I'm not an advocate of, of attacking a water problem from the inside.
I agree. I think, I think match this one, match that top one. It's kind of my, my thing.
Yeah, outside.
Okay.
Okay. So you got a motion and a second to, to rework it all based on an outside solution. All right. Call the question. All in favor? Yeah, all right. Ray, y'all get to work and bring that, bring that back.
Thank you, Ray.
Next item on the agenda is a generator grant. Jim?
FEMA. I forgot about it. Uh-oh. Basically, uh, at the beginning of twenty eighteen, uh, the commissioners were approached about applying for a grant to purchase, um, that would be used to purchase generators for lift stations, uh, throughout the county. Uh, there was a voice vote through telephone. Uh, we're very, very close to obtaining, uh, that grant. Uh, it's a type of grant that's referred to as reimbursable, meaning that if the grant is approved, we would pay for these, uh, generators. One is located at High Falls Road Booster Station. One is P Ridge Lift Station, Cofor Road Lift Station, and New Forside Road Transfer Switch. Uh, the federal government will pay seventy-five percent, state would pay ten percent, and the county would pay fifteen percent. Your share would be thirty thousand dollars if this grant is approved. Uh, what I wanted to do today was obtain formal approval from the Board of Commissioners that if the grant is approved, you're authorizing the expenditure of thirty thousand dollars out of a two hundred and three thousand dollar grant.
A move, approve. Got a motion to approve from Commissioner Ambrose. Do we have a second? Got a second from Commissioner Mommy. Any discussion?
That's only if it comes in.
It's only if it comes in.
Uh, got a point of information from.
There is an extension on this. They removed this grant, staying live. Do you know how the money is coming in? He can come through for me by the end of this week, or first next week. I'm gonna try and bring to you another application for a replacement generator of the shape. So just telling you that there's other ones that could become as part of this.
Okay. Is that gonna require, uh, require?
Require additional.
Fifteen percent. We've got to get approval on this first.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. All right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, that passes if y'all make that, make that happen. Um, we'll let the proper authorities know. All right. Um, next item on the agenda is comments. Commissioners?
Yeah. I think we need to take some action on that Hubbard dormitory. We've got to get people out of the hospital. And looking at those plans, there's room enough in that Hubbard to put the deep, uh, the ones that we're currently got at the hospital, just, and also protect those children. I think that, uh, the county manager had a good plan with that, and he's talked with the different departments, and they seem to be able to handle it. I think we should go ahead with that, his, his plan on that.
Well, on that, let me comment about that. Department of Community Affairs come down. Personally, the Assistant Commissioner, in fact, come down, looked at our project when we started on it, and, uh, got commit, one elder commissioner back there in the back, they looked at it and went through it and showed us exactly what we had to do in order to get that half a million dollars. And it specified that, uh, Save the Children was one of the groups that had to be in there. We told, we told the various departments that we were gonna put in there, that we were gonna, we were planning to put, uh, the four H in there, and also the, uh, County Extension Agent and, uh, the Hubbard Alumni Museum, that had to be specified. All of that was specified in the grant. And they sent the Assistant Commissioner down, and they liked the plan. That's the plan. We had to give more space to the Save the Children in order to get that particular grant, based on the number of children that they currently serve, like maybe about a hundred and fifty or something like that. And that is drawn out. And, uh, there's been some confusion. I wasn't in town last week as to where the museum is. The museum was specified in that center room. And the museum is just a series of exhibits that go back to nineteen oh-two, when the school was first founded. And that's basically it, all the way around. It tells the story of how the school was, was founded with five kids and went on to be a state college, a state college here, that had over three thousand students, and it went to Fort Valley. But in that, what you just said, I go along with it, but it specifies in that grant what it's got to be used for. And we got no problem. We'll work that out.
It specifies it, but it does specify where it's gotta be in it.
Yes, it does.
Does it in the grant, specified?
Yeah, we got.
Jim, have you looked at the grant? Have you had an opportunity to look at it?
I've communicated with Greg Bulkey at the Regional Development Center, and he is adamant that Save the Children and Workforce Development have to be in the building. The rest of those that were mentioned do not have to be. He said, we have quite a bit of flexibility.
Okay. So the only, the only requirements that we have is Save the Children.
Workforce.
And Workforce Development have to be in that building.
They have to have space in the building.
Right. They have to have space in that building. So that's the only requirement that we've got. Okay.
Now, we, we've got to move on, on that, getting these people out to the hospital and tear it place down. I would like to make a motion that we grant our county manager the authority to go ahead and move forward with this Hubbard any way he sees fit to comply with the things and get this, get this thing going.
They've got a motion from Commissioner Ambrose. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion. I, I'm, I'm more than happy for the county manager to take on the project, but I certainly think that, uh, you know, you, you're gonna come up with a layout. He's, I'm sure he's gonna discuss, uh, with, with some of the other parties and try to get the best. I mean, there's several people that are gonna be in there, and we've kinda gotta get a best case agreement. And then I'd like to see that come back to us.
Well, let's let him handle it. I mean, that's what we got him for, and he's doing a good job of getting that handled. He's already talked to them.
But, but I, I do wanna, I wanna see, I, I don't, I don't wanna just walk in.
We need to take the commissioners out of that Hubbard project and let, let him take care of it. It's like fire department.
The mechanics of doing it, I agree, the, but the, uh, where, where everybody's aligned to, aligned in, I, I wanna make, I wanna make, I want all these other people to have buy-in and Jim say, all right, here's, here's what we're gonna do. I don't see there's anything wrong with it.
He's already done that.
And they've all, they've all agreed to that? Everybody's agreed to it?
No, they haven't. Everybody hasn't agreed to that. Why would you say that?
The, 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 the only one that had agreed to it is that where, where the museum part will be, and that's not mandatory on the thing.
Let me say this. The Hubbard Alumni has got cash money in that building. Uh.
Well, then why don't we got taxpayer money in it?
You got it because.
Why didn't we save Betsy Tiff College? I mean, why is that college, why is that Hubbard Alumni so important, taking these taxpayers' money?
For this community, right. Anything that helps people, you against it. Let me say this.
I'm against it, but you got Betsy Tiff College down here.
I did, right.
It was a white college. Nobody wants to hate it. I mean, y'all are out of order.
It was a what now?
Commissioner Evans.
It was a white and black college together.
We paid, listen, yeah, we bought Tiff College and it's paying off now. We paid.
Yeah, we lost five million on it.
That's exactly right. We've got, we've got about four hundred jobs down there. You can't comprehend that. But anyway, uh, you put in your motion, any way he sees fit. That's not right. Hubbard Alumni got over fifty thousand dollars cash in that building, you know, from the start.
But we own the building.
Yes, turn it over to the Hubbard, right, from the board. Yeah, we own it. We sure do. That's exactly right. You've got other entities. We're not, you, you come in, as soon as you got in office, first thing you want to do is turn down the grant money, the five hundred thousand dollar grant money. You come in, everything, you want it to go back on the center we have down there. Close it up and everything.
Close what center?
Our center, they, our center down there, we bought from, from Mr. Patel. Listen, we're not on that area, but I'm just telling you.
Y'all bought it before I came on.
Right. And you come in raising sand about it. But anyway, uh, everything that fits the needs of people, that you cannot comprehend helping people, you know, that's not in your vocabulary. That's not on your thing. But we don't give him absolute authority any way he sees fit. And you up here every day standing outside trying to smoke a cigarette with him. Don't, don't do that.
I came up here last, I didn't even come up here last week, Larry Evans. And that stuff about that convention center, y'all made the mistake of buying that back then.
We made a mistake.
You made a mistake buying Tiff College.
Look, right now, this isn't discussing whether or not, we, we gotta address the motion that's been made about allowing him. So Commissioner Roland, go ahead.
I can't imagine one question. Do you have a problem with coming up with a, uh, with all the entities that are gonna be using that building, coming up with a plan and to, to best provide what each of them need, and then bringing it back to the commission and say, here, here it is? Is there?
I can do that.
Okay. That's all I'd like, I think.
With input from everybody.
With input from everybody.
Absolutely.
Including the Board of Education. They can work in it.
The Board of Education?
Board of Education.
The Board of Education ain't saying nothing. They let these illegal immigrants go to school here at my expense. Don't let them have say in it.
All right. We've got, so, hold on a second. But your motion, what you're saying is to amend the motion. Because his motion is to give him whatever authority he needs to do it. And, and what you're saying is to bring back the plan.
And I think that's a fair thing to do. Bring back the plan and, and just let us have.
Well, you seconded this motion for, so, Ambrose, are you willing to, are you willing to amend your motion to, to fit what Commissioner?
I will.
Yeah, so you got a, we got a motion to instruct our county manager to come to work with any and all of us that want to, to give input of the commissioners, uh, to bring back a plan that we'll approve.
Yeah.
That's the motion. That's the second. I'll call the question. All in favor? All right. You've got your marching orders. Um, the, any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I got one, uh, the work session. I think it'd be a good idea for us to have a work session one hour prior to every meeting. And that will eliminate a lot of the, the, uh, chatter in the meeting.
Absolutely.
What about that? And, uh, you think that's a pretty good idea?
I think it's a great idea.
Uh, and the other one I have, uh, we were gonna engage a smoking cessation program. When we got the federal money from the, uh, there was a billion, billions of dollars that were, uh, coming into the state of Georgia when Thurbert Baker was Attorney General. He joined a suit on smoking cessation and got this, all of these dollars. There's still some smoking cessation monies that are out there. And you have to get them. You have to implement a program to get them. It would behoove the county to have a smoking cessation program. You're an insurance expert. It could possibly, it could possibly reduce our rates, our rates. And on this cessation, smoking cessation program, uh, the Board of Education implemented a program, no smoking on county property. They were saying no smoking, uh, on, on this, allowed on this campus. And we've got it down there at the Hubbard building. This, we've put the signs. And, and I would like for us to consider making it a similar, that we have no smoking on county property or in county vehicles. This may help. You know, I mean, y'all want to think about that. Before we vote on it, it's fine with me. But, uh, as far as the insurance needs, you could probably quote us how much money that would say, you know, right off. Give us an idea. We've got about two hundred and seventy-five employees, and if all comply, it could be a substantial savings. Could it not?
We can help, yes, sir.
Would you like to look into that?
What's the pleasure of the board?
It'd waste the time.
Okay, that's one. Vote. Larry's is four. So what's, do you have a motion on that? Get, get Jim Hedges to look into the?
I make a motion.
Got a motion?
And we look into having this, uh, smoking cessation totally on county property and in county vehicles.
You got, your motion is for him to, to research it?
Research it.
Okay. We got a motion to have a second.
Uh-huh.
Second for discussion.
Looking into it.
Any other discussion on it?
Yep. The ones that smoke, what are you gonna do? Give them twenty minutes, get off company property, go smoke a cigarette, give them all this extra time? You're gonna do that for chewing tobacco, snuff?
I think.
These vaping and all that stuff? I think it's ridiculous.
Well, he's not.
We don't, we're not allowed to smoke in the buildings, and that's what, that's the way it should be.
Not making a motion to, to implement it. He's making.
That's what he just said.
No, he didn't. Hey, John, hold on, hold on. What he did was he made a motion, he made a motion to allow Jim Hedges to research it. That's exactly what he said.
About the smoking on property.
Right. That's right.
And vehicles. And he gonna bring back the statistics, uh, basic statistics.
We'll talk with our health insurance, see, see what that will help or not. Uh, we can get all that information.
I mean, I think we'd be closed minded not to look at it.
Right. So we got a motion and a second to have Jim Hedges research that. All in favor? Any opposed? Four to one. Janet, you've got that overloaded.
Okay. And I want to make a motion that we have a work session prior, one hour prior to every meeting, Mr. Jim.
Okay. Got a motion to have a work session. Uh, I'll second that for discussion.
I think it's crazy. I think we should have a work day session. In an hour's time, you can't, like roads right now, we can't even pave a damn road when we got the money. And everybody's wanting to do the full depth reclamation, two inches of asphalt. I say we get a work day up, eight-hour work day right here and discuss all the stuff, because there's ways to pave these roads to save the county a lot more money than the way we're doing it now.
So you don't like?
And we're not gonna do it one hour.
Well, but he's talking about every single, every meeting. So he's talking about an hour before.
It's gonna work sessions, just like a public event. So everybody come to us. Why not just add it to each meeting?
I agree with that.
Don't come in an hour early.
And I, I'm personally, I have another job outside of this.
That's right.
I, you know, it's already hard enough to get here at six o'clock sometimes. I don't mind going, I don't mind going till midnight. Jeff don't want to hear me say that, but I, I, I'm not in favor of getting here an hour earlier.
No.
I can't, I can't do it. Even if you vote for it, I'm not gonna do it. I'll be here at six.
Well, what the work session will do is eliminate a lot of the stuff that, that mumble jumble.
Well, let's have a work day once a quarter.
You'll be out of here.
I hear you back there, Jay.
Yeah.
We got a, we got a motion for a work session one hour before each commission meeting. I've seconded that. I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, three to two. That motion passes. So we'll start implementing the one-hour work session ahead of time.
That's all I got, Mr. Jim.
Anybody else?
I, I've got one thing that, that Larry brought up, and I would like to, and, and this is more of a finance question. Uh, we do have twenty twenty SPOSS money, and we are.
It's a public meeting.
Spending it. Um, I would, I would just, I would just ask the Finance Department to kind of give us an, an update of, of how much each year you have, because we're spending money that is coming in in twenty twenty. So I want to make, how long's it gotta last? Twenty, twenty-four?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Just to make sure we're, we're balancing it out. I'm, you know, I know some of it that we're going to bond out, but just to, uh, just to make sure we kind of, I, I don't want to leave some commissioner at twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-one, whenever, to have no money. So, so I, I think that's fair to look at. So we'll just make sure we're, you know, we're.
And one other, one other comment I've got on it. There's a lot of discussion. Over the years, we've just, we've distributed the money, road money each quarter. Each district gets the same amount. And it's brought up here lately by some of the commissioners that that's an unfair way of doing it, that they should get more money because they got more road mileage. If we're gonna change the way we distribute the water money and road money, I would like to make a motion that the Tax Department tell us, like District one, two, three, and four, total income on taxes and distribute road and water money accordingly to that as opposed to how much district you've got. If you got one district that's paying forty percent of your taxes, another one paying ten percent, another one paying thirty, another one the other, it should be distributed that way or keep it like it is now.
That would be ridiculous. Georgia Power pay over half of our taxes, and whoever's in that district, they gonna get all the money? Give us a break.
Who's in that district?
Come over.
I'm not talking about.
That's right.
Who's in that district?
But I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about splitting the money up.
Put all the food.
We've been doing it for years. Every, every district gets the same amount. And now we're trying to change it. I say leave it like it is.
Whatever district, Georgia Power, we ain't giving them all the money. What do you think?
Well, I mean, listen to me, Larry. You, they're talking about changing the money. You're gonna get the least amount.
I don't care.
All right.
I think we're moving the right way with our, with our roads. Any other comments?
Give it all to the Georgia.
Which way did we change it though, Eddie?
Well, it's, it's just, I mean, it's just like, uh, when we did Thornton Road, we all looked at it and we all agreed, this is, this is a county problem. I, I think we look at, look at it based on the case and, uh, and, and the need of the road.
The only other way to possibly look at it would be to just take, to, 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 to stop the division, to make it one county road system and, and take the politics out of it and.
Correct.
I'd agree to that.
That's the best way.
I mean, you might have, you might have more road mileage in Eddie's district, but you might have more traffic in John's district. And so, uh, so those roads are getting more wore out, uh, you know, worn down more quickly than his, and so he may need it.
I say quit dispersing money to the district, put a road thing in one fund, and then let's get together as a group what we do.
Make the politics.
You've got some road, roads, uh, uh, Georgia's got some roads, and, uh, it has got some roads that stretch four, five miles that's got three people living on it and very little traffic. You've got, you've got, uh, single lane roads after single lane roads in, in it is this district particularly, with nobody living on them. I can count you out. I can call you ten right off the top of my head right now. Nobody's living on them. And the road isn't an artery. When I say artery, going from one road, uh, major road to another. So it makes no sense to pave those types of roads, and you gotta go back and maintain them. That's how the mileage difference come up. And you can look in my district, wherever, like Westbrook Road, I didn't pave that road all the way through. Could have had the money at that time because nobody lived on that particular section.
Well, that.
Right, English Road, same way. That's in my district. We stopped where the people don't live, and the people thanked me for it. They said, we glad you didn't waste that money.
All right. And you agree, let's put it all in one pot. Let's decide on where it goes. I make a motion we do that.
I'd second that.
What's your motion?
I make a motion we, we quit splitting the road money up, put it in one pot, and we make a decision motion.
Based on the recommendations of staff.
Okay, got a motion, got a second.
Yeah, I got a discussion.
All right, we're in discussion.
Uh, based on the, the severity, the condition of the road, that's, you gotta put, put a criteria for it. That's taking the politics out of it. And you would have, you would have a criteria, and it would involve.
But just why you bring it back amongst us? If you got a bad road, bring it up here. What's that to look at?
No, I mean, yeah, if, well, you wouldn't have to even do that. You, well, take it, take it, take it right off and just put it on the list, you know? And we'll come up with the cost and go from there. And I think that, I go along with that because that gives this, this T-Slash a better chance to pass.
Well, if the, if, if staff brings us a recommendation of here are the projects we feel like are the most important projects to do, then we can have discussion on those and argue about it, you know, if we need to. And then, once we're good, stamp it and pay for it.
Like I said, go out and look yourself. I'll on your mind, my counter. You can go out and check, but like I said, on this, this right here, they're saying there are countless roads on here that just need a strip job.
But that's where, that's where it's gonna come back to us where we put it.
Are y'all familiar?
Okay, on the twenty twenty, on this flash.
Are y'all familiar with or aware of the fact that there is, uh, there's a rating system already? There's a forum that's, that's out there. there's a form that's out there that talks about age of road, population of, you know, of the folks living on it, the speed limits, you know, the safety features, all those types of things, and you rate every single one of them. Junior's still here?
No, he's gone.
He's back to work, but anyway, one of those could be, a form like that could be used to assess all of those, even more.
The bad thing about their rating system is you got to take in weather.
Sure.
And all of a sudden, like you got a detour on a freeway, you got two-hundred tractor-trailer running down Rumble Road, and you ain't got a road left.
Well, I understand, I mean, that part of it is definitely a problem.
That's why rating system's hard to go by.
Can you come up with some professional recommendation on how to do this?
Yeah, can you find that form I'm talking about, and we'll work together? We got a motion and a second, we got a motion and a second to pool the money and use it according, and apply it according to staff recommendations and our, and our vote.
And that's starting on the, on the splash.
Yeah, when do y'all want to start that?
Start immediately.
Start immediately, okay.
We haven't paved road in two years, so.
Exactly.
Now, wait a minute, we do have some, we do have some road projects that are in progress.
Now, we ain't got the money for it.
So for, for future projects?
Yeah, for future projects.
All right, we clear on it?
Yep.
Motion and a second, all in favor? All right, that passes.
Damn, we agreed on something.
Well, we agreed on a few things this morning, you know, a lot of five vote votes. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, while we're in commission, I want to public, I want to say something, Larry Evans said, I don't care about the people out here, I care about the people out here, the whole county. And one of the things I've griped about before is, we got about four or five 501(c)(3)'s we give county taxpayers money to, and it's been the same ones year in, year out, and I don't think that's fair, if we're going to give the money out, I think they should rotate to different 501(c)(3)'s instead of keeping the same ones, or less disperse and stop dispensing that money to those 501(c)(3)'s.
Well, why don't we just lower the amounts and give them to all 501(c)(3)'s?
Well, I mean, I don't have any 501(c)(3)'s that we got in the county, you might have a two-hundred, we've got about four or five we're giving it to.
I'm just talking about, you said options, I'm giving you a third option.
The ones that are getting the money, they have a purpose, they have a purpose, they're fulfilling a purpose for the people and the taxpayers of Monroe County. You're alluding to the Hubbard Alumni Association, the Hubbard Alumni.
I alluded to it.
Let me make, let me finish.
I didn't make.
Let me finish.
There's one in particular.
Let me finish.
We got about five. Those theaters, that museum.
Right, okay, we went through this before, and we explained which, what each one of them do. We have a contract with each one of them. The Hubbard Alumni manages the Workforce Development Center for us, they go out and recruit people that are unemployed, people that need to go to school, they coordinate